I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call a meeting to order those President Daryl Baker County Clerk, Charles Vance President, and Phoebe Harless Commissioner. Mr. Matthews says if he wasn't here by the time we started, he wasn't going to make it, so we're going to go ahead and get started. First on the public comment, I have J.L. Frye, Lincoln Day Report. You want to go ahead and speak?
Sure. You want me to stand here, come up there?
Whatever you want.
He's on there in the discussion.
Yeah, I am also.
Yeah, we'll just go ahead.
We have turned down our MOUs to you guys previously. Did you get a chance to look over those? Okay. All that stuff was pretty much self-explanatory. I wanted to touch on a couple of things that is interest to most everybody. We're from the Day Report Center, obviously, in Lincoln County. We have thirty current clients that are intensive therapy clients. We service probably four, was it four fifty-three, somewhere near throughout the county. We had, out of those thirty clients, we had four drug-free babies born in the last year. We have six folks graduating on the fourteenth of this month. Out of the thirty daily clients, we have, the way our program works, you have to go through different phases to be eligible for different things. Out of twenty-one of our eligible clients, fourteen of them have full-time positions, full-time jobs, and we have one that's working full-time and going to college. We have been in a meeting here recently, or actually just today, we're doing some pretty exciting stuff, hopefully partnering with the Health Department over here that's hopefully going to help the opioid epidemic in this county, hopefully take a lot of money that has been put into the opioid epidemic from the County Commission and the jail bill away from that. We recently became a licensed behavioral health center. We haven't started billing yet, but we're at the point where we can. We're just getting all that stuff together. We've made a lot of strides from last year to this year, not only in our, in what we're capable of doing, but what we have been starting doing. We've acquired a grant to start a fresh start program that is going to allow us to start a recycling program in this county in which we hope to get more grant funding to build an actual recycling center in this county, which is something that we've never had, you know, not only will that help with the litter problem that we are constantly working on now, but it'll also give folks in this county an opportunity to turn some of that stuff in for a little bit of profit without having to drive to another county. Do you have anything else?
Where will that be located? Well, if you don't, haven't got that far yet.
Haven't got that far yet. The grant will pay for things like equipment, vehicles, and even the building of a facility. And we can get up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that grant every other year, but it has to be used for that specific stuff. And the only thing it won't pay for is land.
I was just thinking, you might want to talk to Larry Stottler with the EDA and see about this more and maybe.
Well, I've already been in contact with him, and he basically told us that it's not out of the question and that when we're getting started, the first step of it, we're going to take different areas throughout the entire county, put up recycling bins, and then we'll go check them and do that, but we can keep some of our stuff down there for now and because you basically have to bail it, take it in, and do that. So it should be able to, not with the grants and the money that we can get from recycling, to be self-funded. So that, you know, that's a real good opportunity for everybody in this county, you know, if they take advantage of it.
Good.
Do you have any questions, Brett?
Would your manpower come from Day Report?
Absolutely. Manpower would still come from our community service. We would like to incorporate even more entities into the community service than we do now. You know, we use a lot of probation Day Report ground court clients now, and we'd like to start incorporating that into the magistrate court and some other things as well, maybe even some DHA.
You know me, I'm all about the bottom line, on the dollars and cents. The thirty percent, is that still what we gave last year?
Yeah, well, it's, yes, it's thirty percent, and it depends on what they award us. Last year, they awarded us five hundred thousand for the four counties. The year before that, it was four ninety, so we just, we won't know that until July. But it's thirty percent. Each county pays thirty percent of that.
But it won't be like a whole lot more? Okay.
No, it's, I've been here since two thousand and twelve's grant, and it's never been.
Okay, and you've got to have this to get the grant.
To get the grant application, yes, because without, without the four counties signing, we're not even eligible for the money.
So you don't need the money till July, right?
We don't get the money till July. That's when they award it. It runs on the fiscal year, so we're still half a year functioning on the grant we got awarded last year.
Well, I appreciate you all coming early, too, so we can get it taken care of. And nobody's rushing, is it?
Yeah.
I'm just going to get, do you have anything else you want to say, Commissioner? I don't want to keep bouncing back, but I think we've got some of the information as far as what all you all do for the county and things like that, and I had Mary give a paper or copy of that also, so that people can be aware of exactly what we do. You know, and as you all know, we've all been big supporters of it and things like that. We see the positive impacts of it, you know, and I do as a physician, I see it also, so I mean, it's, you know, it's something that, and I know Judge Thompson's big on it, too, but I do think this is, this is one of the things that we have to do to get a hold of this opioid epidemic, and this is the, this is one of the things that works, you know, and everybody can say, well, this one failed, or that one failed, or whatever, but you're always going to have failures in any system where you're trying to take care of a high-risk group of individuals. And just by virtue of the fact we had four babies born that weren't addicted to opioids is a big plus, as far as I'm concerned. And I think that, you know, and I share Commissioner Harless's, you know, we wanted to make sure that we weren't signing off for a lot more than what we'd given before and things like that, and I knew we'd been trying to get more, more monies from them and things. When do you think your billing's going to be starting and things?
Well, we just signed with, at the Better Health, the health plan, and we're waiting on the final contract with Beacon, so we're, we're ready. It's finally, yeah.
Is it, is it anywhere in here that we have any commotions in here or not?
Well, it's under, it's under discussion, so we can make the motion.
Yeah.
But I don't, it's not like under new business, because it doesn't have none.
So we're signing, is it just one memorandum agreement?
It should be two. The second one is something that we implemented last year, and the board voted to continue that again this year, where we pay you, we pay you twelve thousand dollars for the use of the resources, of the county's resources.
So it's okay if the Commissioner asks for a motion to approve the two memorandums of understanding and give me permission to sign it?
No, thank you.
All right, I'll second that. We'll sign it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you'll have to get them. So you need to sign it, or we'll be.
I think it's two is all.
Two of the three is.
Yeah.
Hopefully, when we have the next meeting, it won't snow me out or something.
Yeah. It always seems like it snows always.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. Can you get us back a copy?
Yeah.
I hope you will.
Email or.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll.
Okay. I'll keep you updated on some things off, as we move forward with some good stuff.
You all can just get out of it.
Thank you.
Back to Logan before the snows.
Tell everybody else they have to sign it, too.
Oh, yes. I'll tell them you guys already signed.
All right, take care.
Thanks, guys.
Bye. Next on the list of public comments, Glenn's already on, Eddie. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back and do what I should have done in approval minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session. If we were kind of commissioner, that was held on January the fourth at six p.m. I'll second that. Oh, yes. Right now, we go, Mr. Turley's on the list of possible, potential action. Mr. Pollard's not, so.
We want to speak first, Ron.
I'd rather let him speak than I, but he can understand what he has there, and I'd like to speak after him.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll try to make it as brief as I can. This past December and January, the gas bill, so far, has paid out over fourteen hundred some odd dollars. That's nearly broke the budget. I've got enough left, probably February. If we can't get more donations and some help, we'll have to turn the gas off on the twenty-eighth. There's no other way around it. It's impossible for us to pay the bill, and we can't afford to go into debt with the buildings, and we have to turn it off so we can pay the bills. So that's how dire our situation is right now. Some of the things that we've tried to do there, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, is we have probably on some days, anywhere from forty to seventy people come through there, and some of these people are the poorest of the poor. They'll take furniture that you and I throw away, and they're glad to get it. So what we do is really, it's beneficial to the community. Not only that, that was also designated as an emergency center. I don't know if you know that or not, but we have seventeen cot, seventeen army blankets, seventeen pieces that go to the beds. We also have stored water there. We installed, the commission did it once, and helped install, there's three showers in the building, so it's available for that. It's also a place to vote. Daryl will have to confirm this, but I believe there's over three hundred and some people use that center to vote. If we abandon the building, it will be destroyed. There's no doubt in my mind. First of all, it'd be almost impossible, a building that old, to get the water drained out of it. Drain the hot water tanks, no problem. The rest of it, we'd lose it. Once the lights go off, electric goes off, that building will be destroyed there in the community, there's no doubt in my mind. Just here recently, we managed to come up with a system that didn't cost very much, so we do have security cameras. Our trash, we had a great problem with our trash. People were bringing their home trash there and dumping it on us, so we've got that situation , in fact. We have worked over the last, it's almost a year now that we've been taking care of it. We've got the trash picked up twice a month. We've got pretty good, decent deal on that. We've got the water bill now, I think it's thirty-four dollars a month. Our phone bill runs about forty-nine dollars a month. Our electric, in the worst time of the year, generally about two fifty a month. We're okay on that, but the gas is killing it. That building has seven units in it to heat. It's got some furnaces, then it's got some morning stoves in some of the corners, but it's really hard. We've cut it all the way down as far as we can. The hallway, we keep it on about fifty-five degrees, except we're there, and we run sixty, maybe sixty-five. So we've really tried to cut every corner we can. We've done everything that we can, but without some actual help from the commission, giving us a little more time, we're working with some churches. We have got a donor that she's helped us with more money than I can tell you. We're talking over a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred. We've actually got a company called Hazlet Construction, I don't know if you're familiar with it or not. They donated some money, quite a large chunk of money. They also designated or gave us a blower motor for our sewer system. I don't know how familiar you are with that. We talked about it at one time. Maybe we could go back to the old system, because there is a septic tank there. Trouble is, when they put in the new system, the actual sewer plant, the lines were deeper than what the old septic system was, so you can't run it uphill. There's no way of doing it. We actually had somebody come in there and check it out for us, and we couldn't do it. So I took it upon myself, and I went to school out at Ripley, out at Ripley Waters, through the DEP and the West Virginia Department of Health, and I got an S-card certification. I can take care of any sewer plant, fifty thousand gallons or less a day. I have that certification, so I can take care of it. So I've worked on it. I put an electric motor on it. I put the pump on it. The pump that Hazlet donated to us is probably worth four thousand dollars. It's a really big pump. The one that was on there, I checked the price on it, they were fifteen hundred dollars. So we're very lucky, the plant is working. You know, longer the community's complaining about the smell, the smell's gone. It's working, but there are chemicals you've got to buy for, because chemicals are expensive. So we're up against, not just a hard place, we're up against rock. Without some help, the twenty-eighth is as far as I can go. That's all I can do. Ronald's here to back me up, tell you what we do down there at the center. I think we're a great benefit in our community. I think we do a great work in what we do. I'm hoping the newspaper is going to come and do a story, kind of explain to people. You can't imagine what six volunteers do down there unless you're there. These clothes come in in bags. We got people from Tennessee, they bring trucks, trailers in there. We unload it, they're in bags. It's got to be taken out of the bag, put on a hanger, and put out just like you would do at Walmart. People come in and treat it like Walmart. They throw clothes all over the place, so somebody's got to string it. So there's a lot of work goes into this. We've got some volunteers working very hard, and I wish that we had some income. About one room rented brings in a hundred twenty-five dollars a month, it's just part-time. So we're here tonight, trying to explain our situation, let you know what we're up against, but without some help from the commission to help us get through the hard part, there's just no way we can go on. It's just an impossibility.
How much was your gas bill?
It was for December and January, it was low at fourteen hundred dollars. It's in the report, I believe she's got everything in the report. Electric, I believe, was two hundred and some odd dollars. That's a lot, but it's manageable. But it's the gas bill that's killing me right now, because you've got an old building, and you've got so many things running in it. Matter of fact, I've got the Jim Mason renter this weekend. Once he's done, I'm going to turn the heater off in there, period, because we just can't afford it.
And he's not lying, I've been over there and it's cold in there.
Yeah, but we've kept everything down as much as we can. I've got a couple places I've got to keep heat on for the water, and that's basically all I can do. So we're just, we're up against something that we went as far as we can go with it. We're just not getting the money in. Now, we've got promises, some more donations. I believe we'll have probably some more, probably around a thousand, twelve hundred dollars, but it's not there yet. So we just need some, if we can get it, some help get us through February and March with these gas bills, that would really be a blessing to us. It would help us, and we could probably keep this thing going a little bit longer, but I think it's necessary. You know, it's, there's just nothing else around, and these people are in need of stuff. We help people that our houses burn out, there's different things comes up, and I'm sure all of you are familiar with that, but those are the things we do, and I think we do a good job, and I think we're needed in the community, and so that's why I'm here tonight, represent that and ask for that.
Mr. President, Commissioner Harless, appreciate your opportunity to address you on this issue.
About a year or so ago, we were working with the community center down there, and they were in bad shape, didn't have their finances correct. Trash company was charging them about a week, and they was right up against it. Since that time, they've done, they've done a lot of changing. They were getting charged about a week for their emptying their dumpsters, so the monthly contract, that's breaking their monthly budget. But since that time, they've got that problem corrected. But this is not only a community center, this is a community service to that community down there. They, there's a lot of people affected by this, and I think we got some ideas to get a little bit of money down there, maybe a little bit of help from people before we can get them back on their feet, so they can pretty much be a standalone organization. This center probably provides more stuff for the area than anything else the county or the state provides for the board or seniors right there in that one area. They've given out boots and shoes and coats and other clothing, so people to have work clothes and stuff, go to work. Some of these boys couldn't even went to work, they hadn't been able to come down there and get their work boots and stuff. They've given coats and sweatshirts and other clothes to the school kids there. That's all a lot of those kids got, that's why, because they get out of that community center, they can't afford to buy any. And this is a great service to that community. We take for granted stuff like sheets and blankets and pillowcases and furniture, but to those people, that might be a difference freezing death or not, though that's where they're getting it. They can't afford to go out, buy new furniture, buy bedclothes and blankets, and that's where they get them from. But that's just something, like I said, we take for granted, and you go down there in the real world, and you sit down there, and you watch people come in now, there, you see what all the needy needs coming out there, and there's a lot of needy people in that community. And it's, it's my belief that the board's done a good job in managing their money and cutting their budget, and it's been a cold winter, which has run up their gas bill and their electric a little bit, and always the county commissions tried to work with all our community centers when it's been able to. I know that with the loss of the coal severance types and different other things, funding's hard to come by, but as far as in the eastern end of county over on our end, it'd be a tragedy to let this place close right now, many people's use. So I hope that we find a little bit of funding to keep them going here for a while. We work with, like Glenn said, we touch and base with the church down there, trying to get something worked out there right next door there, and they like to do stuff for the community. Maybe we can get them involved in this building and get some money from them for the bills. That's something we're working on. It's not confirmed yet, but that's just one aspect. But they are doing a lot better than they were, and they do have some ideas on getting some money so they can stand alone. But we need to try, if possible, get them out of this, this situation they're in this month. That's about it. Thanks.
I feel like I need to say this from our last meeting, when the Harts sent them in, and they weren't here to answer some questions, and I didn't vote to do it, and it wasn't that I didn't think that they needed it, or that they deserved it, because we know they work hard over there, too, but I just wasn't sure that we were in the financial place to start giving out contributions to them without loving, because I felt like if we give to them, we would have to give, should have given them a foreglomie. If we were in a position to give them, we should be in a position to give.
You need me to lie to you about anything that had to do with the Day Report Center?
No.
We're not giving them money and they laugh.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good link. I wish my first wife would have done that.
We told them, you told us to do it, Tim.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
I should say one more thing here on this. I'd like for the full commission to hear it, since Commissioner Matthews is out of our district, so he can put some input in this, but it sounds like what they got, we really need to try to do something, if we can, but if not, I'd like to at least get Mr. Matthews involved. If we can't get nothing tonight, we say, let him put his input in this, because it is his district, his area there. Okay, thank you.
And, you know, one thing I'd like to add, is we probably should keep in mind both that Hart Center and that Center are voting precincts, are early voting precincts, and we have even an election day precinct, and it's a precinct, and we went over before possible optional precincts in that area, when, at that time, when somebody was possibly going to buy that building, and it was a very hard place to find another precinct, another public building, a precinct. That's just something else to mind, we can mind.
Well, I was just, like I said, I was just concerned that we didn't have, to get back into being able to give out money to these centers and things, but, I mean, if you saw like that we were in a position to give them to, do you think that we are in a position to give them since we?
Well, I think, you know, in the Hart situation, it was a matter of, you know, they had heating units that went down, and they had, they had multiple tenants in there, and they couldn't have the tenants in there collecting their revenue if they didn't have the heating units working, so the two thousand dollars that we gave them was for to get the heating units. It really wasn't for utilities, because as we know, they receive monies from the Board of Education, because they have, the money, the kids play ball and stuff like that. And I did, it was KK's idea of wanting to be here when we did this, but I really think and look, and this, I kind of get to the point, I think, I think this, you're kind of in the same situation, as far as even those, you know, we're not talking about heating units and things like that, we're talking about being able to progress or go ahead with what we're doing over there. And I, what I would like to do, and I know there was some, what was five thousand dollars they were needing or something of that nature, it wasn't ridiculous. Well, that's what, what I was thinking of, and it's totally, if it would, you know, such, of course, Commissioner Harless also, but seeing as we know your fourteen hundred dollars down, if we could go ahead and get that approved, if it would be the commission's will, get that approved tonight, and then put this on the agenda for the next meeting when KK's here, and we can rehash it then. But I, but I, I mean, if that sounds agreeable to you all, I mean, because that's what I'm looking at, because we're not going to meet again until the first of March, and you're going to have to pay this bill.
Yeah. Maybe come out with the next one, is, too.
Right, and that would also let us look at what your next bill would be, but I would like to make the comment that we're not going to be able to afford to pay utilities year round and things like that. We don't, we don't do that for Harts, and we wouldn't be able to do that, and knowing the financial situation we're in, we have a lot of things we're looking at that are bothersome, you know, we have attorneys calling us, wanting the jail bill paid and things like that, which we can't afford if we take all our monies and couldn't afford it.
That's one reason I spoke to my dad about when we lost the severance tax, he tried to help us when you've been able.
Right, right, and I appreciate that, because this is a, you know, it's difficult, and like I say, I think it's a matter, though, if you don't pay your bills, you're not going to keep it open. The same thing if you don't, if the Harts didn't, wasn't allowed, if they fixed those heating units, they couldn't keep their tenants in there. So basically, the end result's the same, even though we're talking about different uses of that money. So if it, if it would be all right with Commissioner Harless, if I could have a motion to approve fourteen hundred dollars to pay the corporal center now, and then put this on the agenda for us to discuss it again, and we may or may not have more monies, you know, at the time, but if that would be okay with you, would you offer that?
I would.
Okay, and I'll second that, and is that all?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to get you, okay, go ahead.
I do need to make a clarification. Now, we went ahead and paid that, because it was due.
Okay.
The bill has been paid, but with you giving us this money, I see no reason that we can't be there, at least for the primary, I see no reason.
Well, that's, that's really what I'm looking at, because we want to work as best we can with what we got to work with, and I, and to me, you know, if we do, it's a matter of, you know, we owe that money on other things, too, you know what I mean? But I think the matter, the fact is, if you don't, if you don't, aren't able to pay your bills, you can't stay open, and just like you said, if you've not got electric, you don't have, you know, you may not have heat, and you may not have this and that, and so what we've done tonight is we went ahead and approved fourteen hundred dollars for you all, and then I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, the first of March there, and then we'll hash out, we'll wrap with your bills and stuff, and that's what we want to know, like what your next bill's going to be and things like that, and see if we can get the commission. We'll look at our monies, too, and we'll know more then than we do now, but I don't think it would, I don't think it would harm us to go ahead with this, so we've already approved you all for fourteen hundred dollars, and then I'll put, like I said, I'll put this on the agenda for the first of March, and if you come up with other things that, and what we're looking for is to help you things to keep it going, you know, so that you guys can get to the point. The other thing I would like to, if it's all right with the commission, I'd like to go ahead and send a letter to our gas company people and ask them for donations to your, to the community centers, because they know as well as we do what kind of situation we're in, and we've never asked them for money since, the last monies we got been in Pennzoil gave us ten thousand dollars on a water project, and that's been many, many, maybe eleven, twelve years ago. So I'm, if it's all right with the commission, I'm going to go ahead and send a letter to Lloyd and some of these people about if they could donate monies to the community centers, and what we will do, if they want to send it to us, we'll put it in a fund for that, and then as these things come about in the future, we'll have something to draw off on. And does that sound all right with you all? I mean, because I think, like I said, you know, they're, they want to be good, I think, community partners, and I think that they are in a position, more than we are, to maybe, if they can donate some money to these projects, then if things like this come up, and you guys have something go down, we would actually have some monies to be able to take care of that, or add what money, we won't have to add as much to that if we need to do that.
And we will report back as we talk to these other donors there, and they should know what we're at.
All right, that would be good, that would be good, and as long as we can, as long as we can help, we want to do that, and like I say, you know, I realize the importance... I realize, uh, the importance of these community centers, you know, when they took, when they took our schools out of our communities, they basically took everywhere we had to need, everywhere we had, had any pride in, so it's necessary, I think, to keep these community centers operated if we can. So with that, that's, that's what I'll do, I'll send a letter to the, to the utility companies and things, asking them for donations for a fund just designated for the community centers, and then, uh, what we'll do, we'll administrate that for you guys, and, and make sure they get the proper tax deductions and things like that, uh, but, uh, as of now, we'll go ahead and get that fourteen hundred to you all, and then, uh, I'll put this on the agenda for next time, we'll have Mr. Matthews here, uh, and, and he did want to be here, but he, and he wanted to discuss this, so, uh, but this will give him the opportunity to do that too. Okay, thank you. No problem, guys, I appreciate you coming by.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Do you, do you need internet for the election?
Yes.
Yes.
It's been disconnected over there, uh. We, we can, we can get that, we can add that on to our phone bill, and we can, I think it's, it will run us from forty-nine to seventy-nine dollars, that won't be a problem.
Well, well, and then, we could, we'll take care of the differential on that, I would think, like for the elections.
I don't, I don't know if we, I can't remember if we pay rent to you guys or not, if, if we don't, maybe we can take care of the internet bill instead of the rent, or.
I think we pay rent.
Oh, do we pay rent already?
I think so.
Okay, whatever, we'll figure out how to.
We can, we can.
We'll get it figured out, and we're actually gonna have to move some internet here too, so we may just take care of that at the same time and make sure it gets better.
Yeah, once something drastic comes up, that's, that's a poor bird man.
Okay, okay, all right, guys, appreciate you coming by, give us a holler. Okay, next on the agenda is the courthouse, I really don't, uh, I, when I had her put this on here, it was dealing with some new leads and things, and what kind of, because I talked to Darryl about it, and, uh, as of right now, I'm still looking into how best to fix that, because they were wanting to do one thing to it, and I talked to another person that does that kind of there, and he said that may not work, and we're talking about going back into the masonry and things like that, and they thought that maybe even just getting a good quality tar type thing going on, and may take care of it better than trying to go back into the, the structure of the building and stuff, but I really don't, I don't, uh, you know, I don't really want to, until I get some more information, I think I just need to leave it here for a minute.
You know, I know that they pay my all the insurance money, and there's that thing out there, and there were things people did too, didn't they? And they said there was nothing wrong with that, but there's something.
Some of it runs poor and bad out there, but I'm afraid if they do something.
Well, uh, that's the, one of the things we were checking, because we need, I mean, what, what needs to be done is these people that have, give us the warranty on that roof, when it's raining, they need to come down here and look at it.
They did.
He said, then, then.
Like, this is when they first put it on, so two years, whenever, the first, whenever it was on, they came when it was raining, raining, we had near a hundred dogs, and they say there's nothing, he said, there's some, I can't remember exactly the word, but something about the inside, the way the building was built, there's nothing they can do. Now I have to let the guy that put that roof.
I think you ought to call them again and just have them come back out and show them where it's leaking.
Okay.
Okay, boy, we can't mess up our warranty.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to do that, but we also want to have a, you know, what it doesn't do. It's, it's pretty obvious if there's water below something, then you melt come from somewhere, especially if you're inside and it's wet.
Oh, you can see it, yeah, you can see it, right?
And that's, that's what I say, I think probably, and there may have been some breakdown on whatever they did originally that would be covered under the warranty, so we need to probably get them to go ahead and look at it, and see what they think about it. Anything else on that?
Yep.
Okay, uh, next, uh, I need a motion to accept the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation for the estate of Curtis Odell Mayfield Jr., as submitted by Nick Navy, and both these, uh, we checked with prosecutor as far as the proper, properness and appropriateness for what we're doing, so we'll add them, move them there.
Assistant prosecutor.
Assistant prosecutor, Jackie Stevich.
Oh, I'll, I'll move to.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yes.
For the next is, uh, fiduciary, to accept the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation for the estate of Donald Watts, as submitted by Nick Navy.
I'll send it.
I'll send it. Notice of the precinct change, Darryl?
Uh, we're looking from there.
But I mean, you're.
Uh, it's, it, uh, we, we ran everything we needed to in the paper, as, as, in, in COVID code, and so as far as that, Sean just went ahead and ran, ran it in the paper. The only, the only change that we have is, is, you know, if we're here on Market Street to, to out at the, the, the church location, the new address is the Court Avenue address, but I think it was, uh, uh, eight zero zero six, I believe.
Eight zero zero six Court Avenue, yes.
And then the other early voting will be at, uh, Hearts and, and McCorville Community Center.
So all you had to do was far, was that I before we ran all time last year, and didn't give them to it, but all that you are legally required to do is run it in the paper to give public notice?
Public notice, because it's a change, and, and what had happened was we had that road bond, and we ended up closing the two satellite locations because they wouldn't pay, so we, we went ahead and went back with the original, uh, uh, early voting precincts at that Hearts and Corporal Hammer.
And we have signage we can buy.
Signage.
Right? On totems.
On totems.
What, what percent done, Dale, do you think? Percent done, I mean, how, how, when you?
Oh, I'd say they're seventy percent done, probably there.
Yeah, they're, that's.
They're down to the little, like, you know, putting the doors in.
Smaller stuff, doors and stuff, yeah.
The trim.
They're over half.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Definitely over half.
Okay, so, so we're going to get?
The twenty-fifth, yeah, I just, that's what I, after looking at it, I, I thought, you know, we, we just have to be in there another twenty-fifth, and all we have to have is that one room ready, so I can have them, if need be, kind of start concentrating just after we're, before we can do the early voting, even if it had to do with other things over here still yet, the early voting will be there.
I went over there last week, looked at it, and they were there, and they said, oh, we'll be done.
Yeah, I heard, I heard it.
Yeah, they're.
It's moved way, I mean, it's moved since we kept my.
Are you planning on training your workers or anything over there?
Yeah, we, we should be able to do everything, actually, over there in that space, and it's, it's, it's going to be, looking at it, it's going to be nice.
Yeah, we'll get it finished, we'll have you come in and do your story.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next on unfinished business and possible action, Big Game Hunters Association of West Virginia, we have anybody here from that group? Uh, for the commission's information, uh, I've checked into this with, uh, different people, people I knew in the DNR, people that I know in Logan County where this group comes from and things, and I, I just really don't feel comfortable giving them a, you know, basically saying we support what they want to do, uh, reason being, there's, there's, uh, one of the reasons being is, these fellows used to hunt up there, uh, and ride their four-wheelers and stuff in there, uh, prior to the acquisition of the land by the DNR for elk restoration, and, um, and it's not that I'm against, you know, people that, that have a disability hunting and things like that, but there's a lot of the things that are on up there, that when you talk to people that live there, which I have, uh, I just really don't think this is something the commission wants to, to do anything with. I think that if they are successful, then fine, but if they're not, then I don't think it would have that much impact on things, so we're basically, uh, I would recommend the commission would not act on this, so. Okay, uh, if you will, you've already looked at the new business, hold on.
Take that one out, we need to work on budget revision, but we'll have to do it next time.
Okay, the new business, we're, we're wanting, uh, extract the one with the motion to approve the state budget revision submitted by Mary Napper, because we want to. So, other than that, if you're okay with the new business, I'll ask for a motion to approve the new business as presented.
I'll send it.
And I'll second that. I'll answer that.
Yes.
And, Doc, I don't vote it, I, I didn't have it wrote down, you maybe want me to approve the precinct changes, to change it back, I, I don't think I'm that much of a.
I don't, I don't know if they need to go with Dan, since he's there.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I'll just change the.
Just to change it back to the one.
Do they need to be on this?
To do, to do.
Or, or would we be under the deadline?
We're, we've already took care of the advertising part of it.
Right, I'm just saying, because it's not on the agenda.
It is.
Oh, it's precinct, yeah, that's a precinct change, it's at the very top of the second page.
Under discussion. That page in there? Okay, that's in hot.
Oh, okay.
Say it, say it.
I thought we were talking about this one, that, that's fine.
Yes, I know, yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll back up to where it says notice, because this is, is under.
Discussion.
Discussion, possible action, uh, I need a motion to approve the precinct changes as, as been put notice in the paper.
Okay.
And I'll second that, I guess. Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you, Darryl.
All right, open discussion.
Well, I have a question about this election, it's already stressing me out.
It's in May.
Yeah, it'll be, probably not. The poll workers and stuff, because we only meet once a month, we've only got March first. When do you have to have those approved by?
I have to look the calendar.
I think it's the twentieth of March.
We think it's the twentieth of March.
We looked at the thing, and we think it's the twentieth, so that could be a problem.
Is it March or February?
March, March.
Well, then they need.
Oh, to, to prove, you mean to approve, they can be approved before that.
If they, if we get them in.
What we're saying is, we're going to have to try to get them in before the first of March.
Start working on that, that's what, that we were talking about there.
Yeah, we have meeting the thirteenth, which is next week, I'll, 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 I'll get them together next week, get them ready.
I, I can, I can call the other executive committee.
And I think the Republican chair's on top of it anyway, isn't she?
You start it.
The Republican chair's on top of it anyway, isn't she?
You should.
I mean, I mean, we don't need to know if I heard or anything like that, she knows.
Uh, we have the, the ballot commission, we have, we have to, we have to.
And just tell her, what, would that be the third, what's that Tuesday? Of March, that's when they have to be, by the end on the agenda. The February, the.
Oh, yeah, twenty-sixth, the February, twenty-sixth or seventh, twenty-seventh is the latest. To get on the March first agenda.
March, I can send that, I can drive them in, but, uh, you know, there's deadlines they have to meet, and they may, and they may not.
Do you pick, if they don't pick them, do you pick that some, or that you don't?
If, 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 if they don't have the, the deadline, yeah, then they'll have a bunch, and we, we pick from, from those people that's checked that they'll work, or have work in the past.
Anything else? Um, the only thing I have is I'm still trying to get names and everything of the people below Bud River Dam, so that we can meet with them and talk to them about stocking trout down through there.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I've been trying to get those names and stuff together, but anyone that knows those people below the dam there, if they, if they know them personally, talk to them and see if they can soften the blow when I go up there and ask if we can, if, if we can put trout in there, because, um, uh, the delegate Eldridge and the head of the DNR and the DNR's, uh, people that get, pay for easements and stuff like that, I need to know, uh, get some idea, and we're going to try to do that as soon as we can, but I just really haven't been able to identify landowners, and it's, some of it's been, I, people I've asked haven't done it, so, but we need to try to do that, I was hoping to go ahead and try to get that set up so that we could get some of the spring stock in.
How far down there are you going?
Uh, they, they want at least a mile, uh, but I was thinking if we could get a mile and a half, a mile and a half, I think, right there where Upper Big Creek takes off, and if we could get it down to Feds down there, where you cross nine miles, that'd be great. And, you know, and, and I know the businesses up there are all they talk about, you know, because they've got their camping area up there, and then there's a little, uh, business up there that sells baits and stuff like that, uh, but I, uh, we're going to try to get that done, uh, this month if possible, and, uh, and hopefully that will, uh, but now, you know, if, if we have somebody that won't let us access the river, or won't let the public access the river, they won't stock it, if they, if they post and everything, so I was hoping that with people that, and I know KK knows some of those people too, and he's going to go with us and try to talk with them about, because I know most of the old people, I mean, old guys like me, I mean, you know, I like to trout fish, and you know, you have to go out of the county and trout fish right now, and if we had that, it's perfectly loaded, it's been tested, we know it will support, uh, uh, trout for the spring and stuff like that, so, uh, if you know anybody up there, put in a good word for us, just kind of let them know we're going to be coming.
I have first group of people on the left actually that pass the dam, so I'll.
Yeah, if you guys, if you know any, just get ahold of them, tell them we'd like to talk to them about that, and, uh, and I'll try to get up there this month with the DNR and see if we can get that done.
Well, guys in Bog over Print or Hollow in Boone County, getting that stock up through there, we had a trout club over there, and that state come in, but those people were mainly worried about liability.
Right, well, well, they, the DNR, well, actually, I think, give them a liability, I mean, a thing that releases.
Usually they'll sign them a, a waiver, they turn out liable, somebody's going to break a leg or whatever, but those people were, were okay with it, once they seen that they were.
Well, and I'm sure they, they have, you know, they have that in their, the thing that they're going to bring and stuff like that, but they will even pay the DNR will for easement, I mean, uh, easements and places to park vehicles and stuff, they'll bring and fix those up for us and everything there, and I think that'll be a really good thing for the people around here, I mean, you all know how well they like to hunt fish around here and stuff, and now their deer population's not very good, we'll have to do something other than hunt deer, I reckon, so, but anything you guys can do, and all, holler at me, or holler at Mary and let her know, and if you can give me some names of who to talk to and stuff, that'd be good too, or who you have talked to, and, and then we'll go from there, but I, I really appreciate y'all's help on that, because, uh, a lot of times if I hear somebody they know, they know it ain't, ain't some kind of gimmick or something, you know, but it's just basically give us people that do fish a little more opportunity